Thank you for serving, Jason.
Thank you.
Before you, you have an agenda, and I have no changes to the agenda.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Recognizations? Are there any recognitions tonight? Randy?
Thank you. I have a few. First of all, shout out Connie Heeb and the crew that ran the book fair. They earned $9,700 and that helps pay for our Y Tiki trip as well as some stuff for the library. Congratulations to the good citizens at the elementary for the month of October. Rainey Olson, Sage Lorenz, and Ava Stanton. And then I'd also like to recognize 21 Electric. They're donating the meal for the pizza party. I believe you guys all received an email from Elena if you'd like to join to celebrate our fourth grader for the great job they did last year on White Top. We're kind of trying to celebrate that throughout the year to keep it fresh. So Friday at noon, if you can make it, they'd love to have you.
Thank you, Randy. Any other recognitions? Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have quite a few thank yous to run through. I would recognize Haley Hemrick and her empowering teens crew at Double Aces. They fed the middle school teachers breakfast the week of parent teacher conferences, and they brought a spread. I think we all ate breakfast on those guys for about a week, so that was awesome. I would also thank the board for buying the meal that week, too. I know all the staff at all the buildings really appreciated that. And then I have a huge, huge thank you for three long-term subs. I mean, it was pretty scary to start the year with the situation where you have three substitutes, but we were really fortunate to have really, really strong people in our building. So I would just really thank Colby Pashati, Sandy Hanson, and Kate Schrader. Colby's time is done, as we've hired our title math teacher, as you guys know. And then Sandy will finish up soon when we get Sarah Keeler back. And then Kate Schrader's time will be done when Lee Morrell comes back. Those two have been student teaching down at the elementary school. But good subs are hard to find, so just really wanted to give those guys kudos for stepping in and being a part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Jason?
Question. Are we retaining them or are they done, done?
Oh, wow. So I'll give you an example. Mr. Pashati, we had his last day celebration on October 20th, and then he subbed five days straight for us the next week in different positions. So I hope no one's going anywhere. I'm sure they're all signed up to do some other things in the district. It's just that long-term spot of just filling in in some high-needs areas is really appreciated.
Are there any other recognitions? Paul?
Thank Mr. Chair once again. Another email about a really happy teacher over a sped student in the grade school. That's, that blows me away. That's just phenomenal that we have that much talent in a program at our grade school.
Thank you, Paul. Any other recognitions? Okay, we'll move on. And Dr. Jordan, you're on.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come present to the school board. And I come to you as a member of the Weston County Historical Society, and we're a county chapter of the Wyoming State Historical Society. The Wyoming State Historical Society has an awards program, and the purpose of that is to recognize history projects in schools and out of school across the state of Wyoming. And it is my privilege always to recognize the Newcastle students who have participated in this, in this effort. As you well know, these students don't do history projects to enter an awards program. They do projects that their teachers request them to do. And then the Historical Society has a relation, or has had a relationship with your teachers, and it's been very strong, and we have appreciated that. And they have helped us to recognize projects that your students are doing, and for us then to nominate them on the state level. I don't think that it's terribly unique, but it, you know, in order to receive awards, you have to participate in programs. And our Historical Society has participated very strongly. And Newcastle Elementary School has been the real breadwinner for several years. And this last year, for 2023, Newcastle Elementary School won first place, second place, and third place in the Young Historian grades three to five, and in the Junior Activities grades three to five. The Wyoming State Historical Society had their annual meeting in Cody in September, and three of your students came to Cody to receive their awards at that meeting. Those students that attended were Tyler Rhodes, and he had a project that he entitled "The Wyoming Buffalo Jumps." Laura Lipp came to the Cody meeting and received her awards, and the title of her project was called "Buffalo Jump." And Maisie Owens also came to Cody, and she, her project was entitled "Wyoming Indian History." Tonight, I would like to hand the awards for the other three elementary students that were not able to join us in Cody. And if the principal would accept those, I would appreciate that. So first of all, would be Cameo Hurtado. And so Cameo had a project that was entitled "Native American Clothing." And so he had a poster board that described how Indian clothing was made, and it was a wonderful project. And Cameo received second place for that effort. So they get a certificate and a 2024 Wyoming State Historical Society calendar, as well a check for money, and I'm sure that they'll appreciate that. That's for Cameo. Another award winner was Kinsley Mullen. And Kinsley's project was entitled "My Indian Village." This was a diorama, and she showed how her Indian village was specific to Wyoming, to the Indians in Wyoming. So she also received a check and a calendar and a certificate. And then the last recipient was McCall Benson. And the project was entitled "Learning Why." And it was a poster board describing a Native American girl learning how to be a woman within the Native American culture. It was a wonderful project, and she received a check also for monetary awards. So I want to thank the school board and the school district for having teachers that are receptive to the Historical Society asking about projects. You've had some retirement in the last year in the fourth grade, but we've already been contacted by Elena Liggett, and we've reviewed the projects that were developed already. And so we're very thankful for the relationship with that. We also have a relationship with the Upton School District also. And they had awards in grades six through eight in the Junior Activities. Paige Mills and William Bowen from Upton, they had a project entitled "Wyoming Women Paved the Way for Change." And then in the Junior Activities area, grades nine through 12, they had a second-place winner, and the title of their program or their project was Veterans Day Assembly Community Service Project, and that was Reese Reiman, Addison Gustaf, and Karsten Garcia. So again, we're very appreciative for the cooperation that we get in Weston County for recognition of Wyoming history. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for doing that, Mike, and your Historical Society. Are there any other visitors' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the action items. Consent agenda?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to old business. Communications policy draft on third and final reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move to approve the communications policy on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the communications policy draft on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? I do have a little bit of comments on it. I think it's very important that we always support our staff. And as we look at this, as I looked at the communication policy, there's a lot of questions that I may have or would have under certain things that could arise from it. Number one, it includes board members. And so if a board member were to get in an altercation with a staff member, do we send him a letter? And if it's bad enough, do we say you can't come to the school district? I don't know if that's possible. I mean, it'd have to be tremendously bad. The second thing that I have is, right now, we have human resources. And I know it's new in our district, but in a lot of cases, human resources take care of disputes. They take care of, as I grew up in the private sector, they handled trainings for harassment. They handled trainings for just about everything that could happen in this school. And I think this policy could be in conflict with some of the stuff that human resources could do. The other thing is, as we read this policy, if there is a conflict between a community person, guardian, whoever, and a staff member, and say a board member knows about it or another staff member, who's the one that initiates this policy? And what if the staff member says, "No, I do not want a letter going to the people"? What if they say, "No, we do not want to do it this way. I want to try it some other way"? What do we do then? Because we just broke our policy. And so those are kind of the questions. I think it's very important, very important, that we support our staff. I'm not saying that. And this policy is a great idea, but some of it, to me, is just, is written wrong. A lot of it is. And therefore, I won't, I cannot support it. I think there's too many holes in it. I really do. And it's going to end up with problems for our administrators and problems for this board. And there's so many things out there that could allow that to happen. So just my comments as I read it again. Just my comments as I read it again. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess if you had edits, I never saw them. I didn't see them after first or second or tonight. So I think that's unfortunate because we could have discussed each one. Every person in leadership in this room has policies that guide what they do. And I put to you that this policy will guide human resources work. I guess if you had that many concerns about it, I am disappointed you didn't present us with your edits.
Jason?
I guess the one, I mean, I don't disagree with you, but I guess the one question I have was, was HR, did they look through that also and give feedback?
I have no clue.
Because, I mean, like you said, I mean, some of this falls under that, some of it can be done.
Would you turn your mic on?
Some of that falls under, under that department. Some of that could be done at that level. So I guess my question is, was, were they able to look through that and see, or give their feedback on that?
Okay. I don't know if Taylor's had that opportunity to look through the policy and give any feedback. And to answer your question, Dana, I did comment the first reading on the policy. So I did make those comments. And as I read it again today, and this is when I really sat down and studied it, because I've had this concern for quite a while, that's why I decided to make these comments tonight. But Taylor, did you have an opportunity or anything on the policy?
I looked at it when it was initially drafted. And since it came from the attorney, I didn't see any major red flags with the policy, but I would have the same concerns as you've brought forth.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, Jason?
I guess, Mr. Chair, with that statement, I guess I would ask the first and second if they would reconsider and allow her to review that again, just to see if there's any other thing that she can see that needs to be addressed.
You made the motion. Are you willing to?
I'm not willing to withdraw.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm not willing to withdraw at this time. I think we've had, we've all had plenty of time to look at it seriously. And we set the policy that guides our staff, so I don't see the conflicts with HR at all.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go on executive session for personnel issue under Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, little i, little i.
I'll make a second.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session to discuss personnel issue under Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, little i, little i. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. I'll call the meeting back to order in regular session. Is there a motion to rescind the motion to send letters?
Almost. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to rescind the letter, rescind, that doesn't sound right, does it? The letters to the parents that were voted on in the last September meeting, whenever that was, right? Yeah. End of the September meeting, which would have been the 20th bit.
No, that's October. 12.
In the 27th. So we need to take that motion, CLO, so that we, and we're going to still not do that, so.
So redo those minutes for the next?
No, 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 you don't redo them, but we just need that motion, the wording of that motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
No. Mr. Chairman, I would like to record it in the minutes that I voted on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Now we'll jump down to F. Early graduation request.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure where I was at. Mr. Chair, thank you. In any way, we actually had Parker here. Parker is not here, but Mom is. So if there's questions, but I would recommend to the board the approval of the early graduation for the student in the packet. And primarily, the reason for that is the plan is to go ahead and attend the trade school in Gillette.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the early graduation request from Parker. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, please, I just want to say I am so proud of that young man and for his mom for changing her mind, too. So way to go, Parker.
Okay, there you go.
That's not always fun.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Next, guys.
Can we put off the first quarter report till the December meeting? Would that be okay with the board? Would, or how long? We can do it. It won't take that long.
It's not much.
Okay.
I promise. So I.
Would you hand me a piece of candy, please?
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I sent the first quarter financials to report. Couple things. You'll notice that the CapCon security dollars, we spent some money for NCAPCon on the window security film and cell phone radio boosters. That's a different, last year, we didn't spend anything, so. Also, food service dollars, you know, they're going to be stretched a little bit with the higher food costs. And another thing we need to take into consideration is with the higher living expenses, you know, the water bills and that, that we may have some issues with families not being able to cover their lunch costs for kids. You know, something we'll deal with. And also, the utilities, you know, we got the 40% water increase. I know the attorneys are looking at the contract they have with us. I haven't heard anything, so. And that's I hear. Unless you had any questions?
Any other questions? Our carryover takes care of that extra cost, doesn't it?
Yes.
I mean, we, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Get a motion to approve the.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, excuse me, first quarter financial report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
There's all kinds of questions, but the main question is, do our citizens want this? So let's have it come out.
And there's more to it than that.
There's a lot more to it.
But we've seen, it's sort of been a perfect storm. After the newspaper, me primarily suggested a few years ago, the conversation needed to be had. Everybody thought, I was saying, the move needed to be made. And even if you make the move, you're talking about, I think realistically, probably a two- to four-year transition. You know, a lot of the people who talk about, oh, people's jobs and everything, this isn't something you do overnight. Even I think when you decide to do it, what you do is you start a clock. Hell, we've seen shifting from city landfills to regional landfills takes two decades for crying out loud. I don't think it should take that long. That's ridiculous, but.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Advertise a special board meeting for student hearing. Brad?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I would make the recommendation to the board to advertise for a special board meeting on November 28th for a student hearing, and that actually would follow the Statute 16-4-405, little Roman, little x, little i.
What, what time?
Nathan, can you help me with time?
Nathan, what time was going to be, we're going to try to start at five?
That was what we had said on the last one. I've heard no objections from the other side on that, but I would just want to see what works best for the board there.
Would the board be able to do that at five o'clock?
I can. I can.
I can.
We just got to make sure we have a full quorum.
Okay. If I could have a motion to have a special meeting for a student hearing in executive session at five o'clock on November 28th.
So moved. Second.
Now the word. It's been moved and seconded to have a student hearing at five o'clock, November 28th, under executive session, Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, little x, little i, and to advertise that. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Classified resignation, Brett.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend to the board the approval of the resignation of Jacob Dunseth from the Maintenance Department and permission to post.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Jacob Dunseth from the Maintenance Department and to post the position. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Dakota Playground proposal recommendation.
Yes, and just to underline the board that this is part of the SRF funding if approved. But I would recommend to the board the proposal from Dakota Playground for the elementary playground equipment and installation for $49,998.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal of Dakota Playground equipment for the installation for the amount of $49,998. So, yes, is there any discussion?
Sorry, I, we had to have two meetings to talk about how to prioritize maintenance of our equipment and stuff. So I realize this is SRF money, but is this something that hopefully is not going to require a lot of maintenance?
It will only extend some of the maintenance that could happen if equipment was damaged. But for example, like if a swing gets broke, then usually you have to go right through the company. So then, you know, we still have the responsibility installing. But the purpose of this is to try to spread the kids out through their play to to keep the social distancing. But it's not going to make anyone's life, it's going to make kids' lives a lot. Um, but it's not going to make anyone's life, it's gonna make kids' lives a lot easier. It's not gonna be um, easier for maintenance.
Jason?
So we're adding an additional versus we're adding an additional versus replacing an old, okay?
Extending, extending, extending the play right there.
I should keep that.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board Tina Porter Vaughn as the elementary custodian.
Want to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve uh, the classified recommendation for Tina Porter Vaughn for the elementary custodian. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, and I believe it's Karen, Karen Bowles, uh, to be an elementary general para professional.
Will be approved.
Been moved and seconded to uh, approve the classified recommendation of Karen Bowles as elementary general para. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Oh, that was the twenty sixth instead of the.
Yes, twenty sixth. Yep.
Instead of the twenty seventh, okay. Administrators' reports.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna keep this quick, if I could, please, but one of the dates that is being considered for the legislative dinner to be held at the Douglas Country Club is January tenth. And that is a regular scheduled board meeting. Um, I'm not sure that's a confirmed date, um, but wanted to at least put that on your, your radar. Um, the other quick note that I do have is tomorrow afternoon, um, Kim Councilman, Bryce Hoffman and myself will be meeting with E W C, and they have uh, graciously agreed to look at their funding model based on the number of students that participate in the program of concurrent in dual credit, and we are hoping to see a little increase in that budget moving forward.
We, we do, she does, it's per population, so maybe.
Any questions for Brad? Bo, do you wanna give a report, or you, no? I have, I have one report, I guess it's really not a report, but it's more of information. Uh, generally, the first, well, we only have one meeting in December. We usually approve Brad's uh, contract. And I know that we have not done another evaluation. Do we wanna have another evaluation? Or do we wanna approve Brad's contract? We did one six months ago? July? Do we wanna do another one? Yes, Jason.
Typically, what's been our process?
We do two a year typically, but that doesn't I mean, they're, generally, they're pretty similar into the evaluation.
I guess my, I guess my thing would be just, I mean, whatever our norm has been in the past, just continue doing that.
I mean, we do, uh, if we're gonna do that, we'd have to. Okay, if you would do that. We would, we'd probably need an early start. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do the evaluation. If we're not gonna do the evaluation, or you get, now, it's whatever you guys wanna do.
At the December meeting?
Yep. What's that?
Yeah, January would be.
You can do January if you want, I mean.
Well, we could do January.
Holidays get busy and, and everything, and, and December's a reorganization meeting on top of everything else, um. Just a thought.
Okay, well, if, if it's okay with the board, we'll just do it in January, we'll set it up on the December meeting to do it. Uh, any other board members have any reports? Angie, did you wanna report on anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one little thing. Um, Paul, the auditor was here last week, I think he has everything he needs, he'll finish it in Casper and reach out to us if he needs anything else, but and he will report at the December board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Angie? We'll move on to discussion items, the W S. Oh.
Under future agenda, I, I was, Mr. Chairman, we talked about scheduling and board training, did that, did we get that date?
We have not, I guess.
So, can we do that?
We'll, we'll get him in January.
I was, I was assuming that we would take care of most of that work in, in the conference in Casper, because then you would know who the trainers are.
Oh, we just talked about it at the last meeting, so I thought we were doing it.
Because I'm not exactly sure.
Gessler's gonna retire, so he would be one.
I, I don't know who's doing what at this time.
Okay, we'll, we'll get him set up. The W S B A Delegate Assembly. Did everybody have a chance to read all the resolutions? Do you have any, I guess, as you went through them, did you have any no's? If I have a no on how we should vote, yes?
I I wondered what the rationale was uh, for n- the, their board making no recommendation on the one, cuz I thought that sounded like a pretty good idea, so. Was that the first one? No, the, I thought they.
It was the B O Cs to go directly.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Cuz that sounds like a good idea to me, so I would rather vote aye on that one than nothing, I assume they'll have a vote, but they, their board didn't recommend one way or the other, so.
Right.
I would say, I thought that sounded like a good plan.
Well, I, I questioned a couple of them, but.
It's like B O Cs discrepancy is not everybody's end, B O Cs pays into our bonds for B O Cs.
The one with the, changing the board numbers?
Oh, the numbers?
The first one.
The board size, increase and decrease the board size.
I don't know why you need to change your board, most of them are either five, seven or nine, and, and if they wanna change them, there's a way to do that already, I believe. Uh, our.
Were they just saying it was unclear, they felt like it was unclear and had to change?
I don't, I don't.
I believe that, that the issue at hand is what happens, in fact, Nick probably could really address this. So what happens if you run a nine person board and you don't have nine people actively running? Um, and then the process to downsize to what is, is whose decision, I think is the, the discussion point. Do you go, does nine mean you go to seven, seven mean you go to five, or does the board, does the local board have the discretion to go from nine to five? Can you address that, Nick?
He, he went home.
No, so, I, it's a little bit hard cuz I don't have the, the recommended policies. Um, and I was trying to follow your description there, Brad, so um, it would help me if I could see the policy. And then I can kinda give you a better idea.
This would, this would be just the state, state statutes on how to do it.
Yeah.
On how to size your board, or.
Then I misunderstood what was being said, can.
Well, basically, they wanna be able to change the, the size of the board real easily, without having a cumbersome reorganization process is what they're, what they wanna do. Is what they're, what they wanna do.
And what factors are they wanting to base that reorganiz- I mean.
They didn't say. They just wanna make it easy.
Yeah, they, they, like I said, it, it's very vague, but, but as Brad alluded to, you know, you have a board that is a nine panel board. Elections come up, we don't have, we don't have four people running, we only have two. So, what, what do we do with those open seats as, as a board? Do we have the, do we have the capability of deciding, does the state have, is there something that the state ha- has to put in place for us to do that? So that's kind of the you know, how, how does a board increase or decrease, um, if, you know, during that voting year that you do not have have those members.
Generally, it's appointed to fill the open positions. Like they would be on the county commissioners or uh, any of that, so, and I would have to look at the exact procedure with school boards on how that goes, but I would have a lot of concerns with a, what happens if you don't fill those positions, you scale to seven and you make it easier where you don't reorganize. Now is your board just seven, and in the next election, two seats out of that term drop off? Like I, I don't know exactly what the proposal is there. Make it easier.
And I know you're right, as far as if, if we have a vacant seat and the board itself can't come up with a decision, it's left up to the commissioners to fill that seat. So, but I don't think that's what this is, no, this isn't about, it's, like I said, it's more you have a nine panel, seven panel, whatever panel, and all of a sudden, you don't have that many people running. How do you dissolve that or change that number, so?
And I, like I said, that one, I don't know. I, if, part of it would be, I just, I can't see the, the proposal, so if Brad or somebody would shoot that over to me, I can give you a quick jot on that tomorrow for the board's consideration, but without seeing the proposed language of those policies, I can't give you a potential pitfall on them.
I guess that, with that, Mr. Chairman, would the, if board can, would the board be opposed to uh, once, I mean, I don't know if that just comes out to everybody, or if, if we're okay with once Brad has that information, Brad can give me his take, and then I can make the voting decision up based off of
we've done that in the past, where you just, the delegate just makes the decision after hearing the communication.
Okay.
Um, I did have one on the, on the fifty thousand dollar deal, and, and I don't know why you'd wanna hide that, I mean, what's the big deal, you, you put it in the paper and you advertise that you have a bid going out for seventy five thousand dollars, so what? Or fifty thousand dollars?
I, I, I think it's more, um, the devil in the details as to what is posted. What exactly we're doing, we're adding cameras here, here, here and here. Well, now, I, I've been to your school, I knew at one time, there was no camera, so I could come in this door and shoot it up. Well, now you just told me you're putting cameras here, here, here and here. Well, you just gave away, you know, you.
Yeah, but if they.
So I think that's, that's what I think they're trying to say is, is not publicize basically publicize in a general sense versus, you know, lay it out to the public, this is exactly where the money's going.
Okay. And then the, the retirement and wage. You know, where you have to stay away thirty days. If you retire, you have to be away from the.
For the, the retired teacher.
Yep, and, and then you come back thirty days later and they can hire you back. You know, I, I know that that is, that's kind of been, been discussion before, and it's kind of a double dip. Because here you're getting your retirement money, plus you're getting a wage. And not only are you getting a wage, but that wage, they're part of that, it's going to the, well, I mean, retirement. And so, that was part of that issue. Now, I don't know how they wanna discuss it, but, you know. Anyway. So anyway.
So with that, though, is there, I mean, is there any maze to any, anything that anybody has seen?
I guess my opinion is you listen to the conversation down there and make your decision, but. You know, there, there's gonna be some conversation on this stuff, I'm sure.
And just so the board knows, they are changing that, or they're going to try it again, where everything is electronic now, so we'll have our cell phones and everything will be on the phone or laptops or whatever, yeah, yep, so. So just there, they tried it last year and it didn't work, and so they're gonna retry it again this year, they think they got the bugs worked out, so.
Okay. Uh, the A E G I X, I don't know how you say that. Aim.
Aim, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I say, um, did everyone go to see the, the email I sent yesterday and get to see the product and everything? Um, I sat with Jason yesterday for about an hour and a half and discussed it and went through everything, um. Again, I, really deep product, it really is, um. But the price tag is hefty. Um, and I think if we, if we look at something like this, one, it'd be, it'd be nice if it were universal, like they were talking about the way Gilbert has done it, that would that would help it, and I think we would have to. Did you get it? So, so what was, what they were looking at was the hospital was maybe gonna purchase it, the county was gonna purchase a version of it. And it would be more of a city universal security type thing, we'd all be kind of under the same system. Um, I think that would go a long ways to helping with this, um. And then at the price tag, you pay for it, it better be used, and, and I, and I spoke to Jason about this, I said, man, for, for six thousand dollars a year, I said, it better be more than just a lockdown device. Um, and so we went, we went through some things, um, it would definitely, it would do your fire alarms, um, and it really does, the integration part of it is super cool, um, and like he said, um, what's that?
There was some neat video.
Yeah, and so, and that's one thing, too, Jason is more than willing to, um, do a training for the crisis team, um, he actually said he, he could do a demo for us for the next one, but I know everyone's gonna be gone. Um, I'd be willing to still do it and zoom it and record it and share it with you if you would like that, um. It, like I said, it, it, it really, really new product, um, integrations are neat, um, uh, and, and, well, what I probably liked the best about it was, um, like he said, when you go into lockdown, there, we have lots of things that put us in lockdown. But after the lockdown, I, the live map is really helpful, so you can actually see where problems are, it has chat with different groups and stuff, so you can send out messages. Like you said, it puts all our stuff kind of under one umbrella, which is really handy, and if they do all the integrations, like you said, where you can lock down from there, so it'll, it'll work with our access. Uh, it'll tie our cameras in. And then it also ties to our S I S, so that's why I'm saying, well, you could set it up or with, with fire drills, where instead of holding your red card, your green card, you could now do it through the app, or if you're missing somebody, you could, um, message Bryce or Diana through this app. So, but I said, it's spending, it's spending, it's six thousand a year, three thousand to set up, and then I, under the small print, I read there, your training is another twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred, I mean, it is super expensive. So, if you do it, and trust me, it's a neat new product, um, we would have to make that part of our every month, every, I mean, we would have to run a lot of stuff through it, and, um, I think I'm gonna get ahold of the guy from Star Valley, cuz he, he, he was pretty big into it, and, um, and see what, uh, what they've all done.
Jason?
I mean, obviously, this is kind of my thing here, um, like Bo said, uh, just the, the, the map view, um, the cameras. Not only for the teachers, um, but for law enforcement. You know, we can click on a camera and see exactly what's going on in real time. Um, the mapping system, you know, what's, what's happening in the high school, the middle school can see it, and they can, without, without somebody saying anything, they can look at. The middle school can see it and they can, without without somebody saying anything, they can look at that map and see. Where the threat is and they can make their assessment. In real time, right there to to which way to go, go down this hall, go down that hall. I mean, everything costs, and you know, you always say what what's what's the cost of? A child, you you. And not, not to, you know, use that as a, you know, a ooh, boogeyman thing, but. I mean, you 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 look at what's going on in this world today. Um, like I said, and and like I said, it 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 ties in. You can do, I mean, we have. Tac one come in once a year, maybe every couple of years, that's our training. This, you can do silent trainings just with the teachers among themselves, you can say, just this hallway, we're going to do a drill. While the while the kids are studying, taking a test, teachers could be doing a drill right off their phone. Again, everything has a cost. So.
So Jason, you said whoever's all hooked together can see anything that's going on any time, but is that after a threat has been reported? After they push that red button, then it brings everybody in.
Yes, so the system is set up to where. Everybody, you can have it set up where certain people have access, everybody has access, you can set it up, certain groups. Middle school, high school, all school. I mean, there there there's a hundred million thousand ways to, that you can program this system to. Give whoever access and what access you want to give them. Um, again, it goes, like you said, it's chats where you don't have to physically come over the speaker, you can chat, hey. He's over here, hit the button, you see a little red light saying he's right here. If you're worried about the alarm going off, there's a mode in there that it's a silent mode that, you know, it'll. It'll zap your phones, but it ain't going to let off the big alert that it'll let off if you have, you know, off mute. So again, there there it's. It is, um, and it ties in with everything that we do here.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information. On our award winning website, news L J dot com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to news L J dot com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Again, it's. Time is valuable when it comes to certain responses. This will tell you exactly where, this will tell you exactly what floor it's on. Um, you know, example for the courthouse, three stories. I don't have to try to clear the whole building, I know it's on the third floor versus starting downstairs or working up, same thing here. There is a lot of doors you're going to have to clear as law enforcement. This tells you exactly where this person's at, so.
Um, so do, does everybody? Does all our staff have a device that that app can work on?
Yeah, so that was a question that I had for Jason, because he had mentioned cellphone, 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 so I said, that's great, but I have. There are some teachers that there is no way they're going to let us put an app on their cellphone. Um, so all the teachers, um, all the pairs now, we all have our own devices, our laptops and this and that. So I asked him, um. Integration, just on our side, I said, well, is it an app, is it an executable? He said, there is an executable, so. If we had to, we could put that on staff image and put, push that out on the staff image to everybody. He told me what what eventually happens is after, after seeing the product. Seeing what it's for and seeing the uses, that most teachers at some point will just put it on their cellphone. Um, because it works through, uh, you know, it'll work cellular, or if we're on our devices, it'll work through the wifi. Um, ideally, I would think you'd want it on a, on your phone, in case you don't have wifi or vice versa, you have one way of getting out, so. It, trust me, I I think it's, it it is, it's a very cool product, and especially if it integrates it. What essentially, guys, we have all this stuff, we do, this just puts it all on under one umbrella, I mean, I could share cameras. To law enforcement through my cellphone, if I wanted. But I would get on Bracata and I would share it. We want to send messages, we get on Outlook and we share them, you know, like you said, essentially, this just puts it all under, under one umbrella. And and like you said, I thought the coolest part was, yeah, there's lots of ways to lock stuff down. But it's almost more proactive afterwards. Cause after you do it, it'll tell you what you do. In your lockdown, turn lights off, do this, do that, and then it'll light you up. So when when it's triggered, it'll send you a question saying, are you safe? That's the first thing you do, hit yes or no, and that and then it'll ask your location. And then you can hit your room or there you're there, you could drop the map on it too. And then what it does is, it does live view mapping. So if you're safe, it'll light your room up green, if you're not safe, it'll be red. And if you need medical assistance, it'll be red with a blue circle or box around it. Like you said, if we do it, we better base all our stuff around it, in my opinion. Uh, fire drills, kid pukes in the in the hallways, you want to have the teachers hold their kids for a second, I mean, it's got to be. And he says what they do in Star Valley essentially is, they sit down. Once a month and they say, hey, we're going to do, we're going to go through this scenario on this morning. And then they'll hit it and they'll they'll go through their whole scenario.
And and like Bo said too, it it's not just for that, it is truly janitor, we have a spill in aisle five. You can set that up to where it 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 tells that janitor and only that janitor, it doesn't have to come across. The intercoms or however, however it does it. You 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 can definitely make this as specific as you want to a specific person, coaches, whatever, so.
I do like the internal groups, I really do, because you can set up an admin group, a teacher group, and they can actually chat. Back and forth between groups, or if they're looking for, for a child, they can chat right through, right through that, so. Like I said, I I think it's a, it's a neat product, but it's sucker expensive.
Well, and 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 like Bo said, he's supposed to be P, he went to the bathroom. Something happened, now he's, now he's in the math room. I have him right here, before, you don't know where the student is, you just know he's out there somewhere, well, now you have that capability to say, hey. I have him, so.
So, sounds like this, this is a pretty wonderful thing, are there other? Programs out there that are, that do this, or like, is this the, is this like the Cadillac for? Cause I'm just thinking, not not that I want to skimp on money for safety or whatever, I'm just saying. Are there other programs out there and have we looked at them and and compared like this program will do all of these things? For less money or they're all more expensive than this program or it, I just am like. For the capability, it sounds like it's a great thing, I I just am, like you said. It it is very expensive, and so is this the only thing out there or are there other things?
No, no, there's actually quite a few that that do the lockdowns and do all of that, this is the only one I've seen that does the live. The live map in internal chatting. Um, they've definitely have gone out a lot, quite a ways and they've worked with the, um, access companies and they've worked with the. The video surveillance companies and they're getting those third parties. Yeah, it just depends on 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 what you want, if you're okay with just lockdown, you just lock it down too. And 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 truly, guys, I, if you really want to, I can set that meeting up. For the crisis team. And I'll just send them our view, our Zoom, and that way I can record it. And I can send you guys a recording and 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 maybe that's better, you see the same training I did, and then we can just kind of go and make decisions from there. It's a new product, but it is, it's an investment, it is.
Thank you, Bo.
I guess I have one more. Does it matter then, so you're saying that it looks like they're going to try to do this citywide or whatever, what happens if they don't? And we do, can we still? Does it have all the same capability and whatnot for us, like if we share, you know what I'm saying?
So it 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 doesn't matter who, it it, so it's basically if we have it and the hospital has it, nobody else. As far as that's concerned, as far as law enforcement, fire department, EMS, those two entities will get that information. Yep, yep, if we're the only ones, then we're the only ones getting faster response times than any other emergency, so. Yeah, so yeah, it doesn't affect if nobody else does it, it's it, but if the more you have, obviously, as far as first responders. The better off as first responders we are to have more of those entities, so.
And 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 truly, these are just initial numbers too, I mean. Uh, uh, we can definitely talk with them and work with them and I know I've thrown out some different ideas too, so if we could even get it to. To two buildings as opposed to three, that's at least saves you two thousand, so like I said, it's it's really early in it, so. But again, like I said, I I can definitely set that up if that's what you'd like me to do and I could share it out and we can kind of move. Move forward there, the the crisis team can talk about it, I think Gilbert Nelson was, um, was the one really pushing this. He was the one who got everybody together and they did a Zoom together with the, um. What was it, Jason, it was the hospital, the county?
Yeah.
And law enforcement.
Yeah, it was at the hospital, um, the county. At that time, we weren't able to get the school in as quick as we we had the 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 meeting. Um, I'm trying to think who else we had there.
I know Maren was on there for me.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so.
Yeah, if you would copy that to Zoom or.
Yeah, I'll talk to Jason, we have a call tomorrow, I'll set it up, I think it's six, six, sixteenth, like Brad, is that our next crisis? Maybe that's, we'll just put that on the agenda and show it now and I'll deliver it and prepare it.
Thank you, Bo, yes, that, oh, Dennis, sorry.
All right, is, was this the last of our E S R money that we spent tonight?
No.
Because it, I think. What, it may. Yeah, E S R, E S R did recover some security things, right? So it might help with the initial installation and training if we had it and.
And I could even see what we could do for like three and four year contracts. And try to spend it out a ways, the problem is, once it's gone, then it's on our shoulders.
Right.
I'm sure there's probably even some security grants that you could probably look at with. I would, I would think would be a direction.
Everybody, it should be nice to find some grants or some money from somewhere else to help us out, because. Six thousand a year is a good chunk of change.
Yeah, FEMA had some for security that would, as. That would go to a designated state agency and then go out to, um, various nonprofits.
Well, true, if it's really something good, we could almost really get some legislative people aboard and. And they could maybe do something legislatively statewide. That would help everybody, um, big, small, school districts alike and. If you're going to do it statewide, I'll guarantee it would drive the cost down. My biggest concern is one, one meeting, we say we don't want the phones in the classroom and now we say we want your phones with you and. I mean, we 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 really are setting sort of a wild trail here. And and the other thing I always have worried about is, you know, they always say you're going to either fight, flight or freeze. In the freeze mode, I don't care what device you have, it's it's a freeze mode. Um, the others, um, from what I've seen with our response time. People aren't watching their phones, they're, they're out to seek and destroy and they're and they're moving at a very rapid pace. So, yeah, I mean, that's what I've experienced in the schools is they're coming fast and they're coming hard. Thank you, Bo. The twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendar draft. Just to draft again, just seeing if there was any feedback, um, I'm not sure if we were really ready for prime time or not. I don't, I had not had anybody want to talk about the calendar as much as they wanted to know when homecoming was. Um, and they really won't know that till Alicia attends the state meeting in November. And the state does the football schedule and that that'll determine homecoming.
Well, I got four thumbs up on Facebook. I can, I can't tell you that, four thumbs up and it was shared, I think, five or six times. The calendar, um, now I don't know, we'd have to talk to the principals, because on there I did put. Any questions, please contact your building principals, but last I knew, I didn't think, didn't sound like we've heard anything yet.
I was one of those shares and I asked for, uh, civil comments and discourse, um, which I got. Shame you have to ask for that these days, but that's another story. There are a number of people who still think that a five day week is what would work best for their families and. And there, uh. There are people also do understand that there can be a childcare and a food security issue. And, um, so overall, I think people are pretty happy with the early release Fridays, so. They have not, I think, when they decide they really want a five day week, they'll. Get together and they'll make it a, or or a four day week, that they'll get together and. Do a petition or make it a campaign issue or something, so. I think people are overall pretty happy with this.
I did have two people suggest a three day week. No, truly, um, a longer day, uh, three days and and the primary focus was. Is the the need for some family time and let's face it, with our activities. Um, it's a Thursday, Friday, as much as it was a Monday, Tuesday. Um, really, the only day that we don't do a lot of activities is is Wednesday because of church night. Which we still stuck with and several others have walked away, but. Most of your big schools, I think they treat Wednesdays just like they do Monday through Friday.
So do we want to put this for a vote, unless we hear something bad for the next meeting? Okay, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Seen nothing else on our agenda. Meeting adjourned.